This conference will now be recorded.
At the time, 6:34 PM on June 14th, 2021. I'm hereby called the regular June 14th meeting of the Charter Review Committee to order. And in terms of a roll call, this being a go-to meeting deal, I believe I see a complete council committee of six. I'm here. Mr. Robbins, you're here, yes? Mr. Roberts is here.
Here.
Okay. Gage, you're here. Carter, you're here. Christina, you're here.
Here.
And both council liaisons are here. And Ms. Silveira is here. All right. To conclude the roll call, we'll move to citizens' comments for non-agenda items. As we don't have any citizens spectating right at the moment, I believe I can go ahead and call that complete, yes? In any case, if anybody's out there, please speak up. I take it by your silence that you're not there and you have nothing to say. All right, we'll move on to the meat of the meeting, the discussion and possible action this week. There's no action on the comments of city, of the comments by council liaison, but they got lumped in there, but I will let the council liaison go ahead and, and give their comments at this time. Mr. Davila, do you have any comments today?
Yes, a real quick one. I'd like to advise the Charter Review Committee that after this meeting, there are only a few minutes left to wrap up the review of our city charter. After reviewing the schedules of both the Charter Committee and City Council, it's important to prepare and schedule a presentation to City Council in order to submit the substantive changes that are, that are being proposed by this committee. Non-substantive changes such as your suggested grammar and punctuation corrections, those can be made with the substantive changes that are approved in the 2021 general election. By my calculation, after this meeting, there are only two days when a presentation can be made to council. These are the meeting dates of July 1 and July 15. On August 5th, City Council will make its final considerations and vote on the proposed charter amendments. This, of course, is on the heels of the August 16 deadline for ordering the general election measures, which will appear on the November 2nd general election. So we're working kind of a timeframe now.
Yep, we are up against the wall. And hopefully, we will get something, some things approved tonight. I'll get to that in a minute. Ms. Marian, you have anything you would like to say?
I think the only thing that I would, might suggest kind of along the vein of what Counselor Davila just shared is putting on the next agenda, something about strategizing for the presentation to City Councils so that you all can freely discuss that topic and what, you know, what that presentation's going to entail, who's going to do it, so you can work out all of those kinds of details ahead of time. And, but it needs to be on an agenda before it's discussed.
Okay. All right. Okay. Is, that concludes council liaison comments. We can move right to some of the action here. As you will notice in the packet, at the end of the redline version of the charter that we've been working with, I pulled each paragraph that had a substantive change, or a non-substantive change. And the reason I did that is so that we can make sure that we all agree on those being non-substantive. And I'm hoping that tonight, if they, if there's no disagreement on those and that they are all non-substantive, that we can go ahead and vote those through. I have a question for Erin. Erin, do we need to vote on each of those paragraphs individually? Or can we, and can we vote on the non-substantive changes as group?
So, um, there is not any specific procedural process that talks about the voting at your level. However, every single item will need to be isolated so that voters of the City of Lago Vista can vote on them individually. So it may be important, with the exception of the non-substantive changes, you can group that together and have that as an item. But, you know, it may be better for clarity that you vote on each of the particular items, so there's no confusion about them. Hopefully, there, you know, if there needs to be discussion, you can do that.
Yeah, and that, the, the second list tonight that I hope to get through is the substantive changes about which we believe we had consensus. And obviously, if anybody says, no, we don't have consensus on that, we'll pull it out of there and put it with the, the contested stuff, which is going to be upcoming. Frank?
Question for Erin. In the last ordinance that you sent us, Erin, it's, and I can't, I can't pull it up. It'll take me a while to pull it up. But it seems to me there was a provision in that ordinance that allowed for grammatical changes without having to go to the voters, voters, correct?
No, that, no, that item was actually on the ballot. There was.
Well, I understand, but the voters couldn't see each one of them.
Sorry.
So, Ms. Chairman, I apologize for this, but it seems to me they're two different kinds of non-substantive. One is grammatical, of which there may be a few, and some that are not grammatical. So am I in the wrong place, Erin, or Mr. Chairman?
I'm not.
In other words, how do, the issue is how do we deal? How does the, how do, what do we recommend to the council to put in the ordinance for grammatical changes? And then everything else is going to be listed by literally word for word, correct?
That's correct.
Now, do we have to sort that out, or can you all sort it out? Because the last time around, we, the committee did not sort that out.
Just as a, just as a side though, Frank, in looking at the list of non-substantive changes that I, that I provided, I believe they, that they're all grammatical.
No, sir, absolutely not.
All right, well, tell, which? Okay.
Well, let's, let me, let me, let me pick an easy one. Section 5.01, city election.
That's not on here. The list of non-substantive changes are section 401, city manager, section 406, human resources, section 612, section 810. These are, these are the ones that are listed at the bottom of your document, right?
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe these are all grammatical. If, if not grammatical, just stylistic changes or corrections of, of previous conversion errors. And, I mean, do, do we all agree that those non-substantive changes are and should be made in however it's done? Whether it's listed as a, I mean, if we're going to make changes to the, to the charter, then I believe, do we all agree that those changes should be made? And that I've itemized them as correct?
I am in agreement.
You're in agreement? Okay.
I am also.
Okay. All right.
I am also.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion, Frank.
I move that we recommend to council that non-substantive grammatical changes be made as listed in your document, which was part of the packet for section 401, section 406, section 6.12, and section 8.10, and section 8.12.
I would second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
That was easy. All right. All right. Now, let's go to the second document that's at the back of the thing, which is a list of substantive changes that I believe we had a consensus on.
I'm just reviewing them one more time.
Okay.
I suspect not.
Well, and I, I, yes, Frank?
I'd like to pull one, but it may be Charlie to do that. Is that the way you want to do this?
Yeah, if you don't believe there's consensus on one, let me know, let me know.
Well, we may need to talk about it. That's, I don't know, I'm not sure. That's why I'd like to pull it.
All right. All right.
Did we go in order?
Yeah, let's, let's go through them in order and just, and just kind of double nod on our consensus. And then if we could, if we can get to a document at the end, we'll vote on that and lock, lock these down. What I'm really trying to do, guys, is get a bunch of these out of the way so that we can get to the ones we really need to discuss, debate, and, and talk about. Okay, section 101, adding a sentence that says the official name of the city is the City of Lago Vista, Texas. Do we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes. Yes? Okay, we don't need to pull that one. All right. One second here. Okay. Now do section 201. Prior to the alphabet, alphabetical listing below, there are two changes, I believe. And one of them is, was read, but not underlined. I hope everybody can see it. It says, "The city is a home rule city. Accordingly, the city shall have full and complete power of local self-government and all authority and powers, both defined and implied, that are not consistent with state law." And we added, "Or this charter." The second sentence says, "The city shall further have all other additional authority and powers now and here and after granted to home rule cities by the state, by state law, including but not limited to," colon, and we deleted the city may. Is that, are we in consensus that that reads, reads the way we want it to at this point? Yes? Thumbs up across the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Carter, we can't see you, so if you, if you don't see, if you need to say something, speak, holler loud, okay, buddy?
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted to know if we skipped section 1.04. We were talking about in part A at the end, laws of the state of Texas now, or as, instead of maybe, must be amended.
On 1.04?
Right. A, at the last line?
Yeah, now I've left that in because we have no consensus to this change as of the last meeting that we talked about it. So, and some of these non-consensus ones might go fairly easily. It's just that we didn't, we didn't have it at the time.
Okay.
Okay. So the next, the next one that I believed we had consensus on was in 2.06. And all we did in 2.06 is, in the fourth line, we added the word, we added acquire to the list of the things the city has the power to do. "City shall have exclusive dominion, control, and jurisdiction in, upon, over, under the public streets, sidewalks, alleyways, highways, public squares, public way, public property within the city limits of the, within the corporate limits of the city. With respect to all such facilities and public property, the city shall have the power to acquire," which is what we've added, "establish, maintain, alter, abandon." That's the only change I had, and I had all agreed that that was good additional lingo. It's a thumbs up on that, yes?
Agreed.
Yep, okay, across the board.
Right. Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Okay. The next change was in, that we seem to agree upon, was in section 3.08. Removal from office. And it's in the paragraph that begins underneath the alphabetical listing. We do not have. Mr. Chairman, has anybody else hearing that feedback come through, their speakers? I'm hearing some bad feedback.
I think it's coming from Carter's phone.
Hey, Carter, can you mute yours, mute yourself and see if that helps?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Thanks, Paul.
Good catch. Okay, so we get down to the paragraphs that start with removal proceedings. And this, the changes, the only changes in it were, we changed executive session to open session in both that paragraph and the next paragraph, wherever it was referenced. So there were three changes. And as I understand it, this, this is primarily to be, remain consistent with the Open Meetings Act, correct? Or Erin?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. The Open Meetings Act does allow for executive session discussion of public officers and employees. It would not, however, allow executive session discussion of, for example, advisory board members. So if, you know, given that this is focused on, the council members, they, that discussion can happen in, in executive session.
Chairman, that's not what we heard earlier.
That's not what we heard earlier, no.
I agree. I agree. So interestingly, I've had to do a little research on this issue. And so one of the things I came across is some attorney general, and attorney general opinion discussing what can be discussed in executive session with regard to the specific exception under 551.074, I believe it is, which is, allows for executive session discussions of personnel matters. Initially, my thought that was that personnel matters was limited to employees. It's not. It is open and, and does allow for discussion of public officials, public officers. The distinction there is that it has to be someone who has final decision-making authority. So for example, Board of Adjustments, Planning and Zoning Commission members, City Council members all fall in that category. And therefore, discussion of discipline, appointment, employment, all of that can happen in executive session for that group. So given that this is about a complaint related to a council member, then that, that can happen in executive session. Now, that doesn't mean it has to.
Doesn't mean it has to. So it gets to the point of whether, whether we want it to be in executive session or open session.
Right. Do you want your partner to allow for that or require it?
Does that, does that, do we need to remove this from the consensus?
Yes.
Or consensus?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it ought to go back to exec.
I think it should be an open session, so we do not have consensus.
Yeah.
I think it should be an open as well.
I do too.
Yeah, I, I agree.
If we, if we have one person that says it shouldn't be, that, you know, I'm going to give them a chance to make their argument when we get to that, if that, if that makes sense.
And also, Rob, I'm seeing, I'm sorry, Judge Durbin, I'm seeing, it says mayor pro turn. It still says that. I, I thought that we had changed that to mayor pro tim. Do you see that? It's in, maybe we can do like a replace all in the whole document, but it is mayor pro turn.
Yeah, I could barely even read that.
Right.
It's a conversion, it's a conversion error, but that is a good catch. If, if, if nobody, if nobody minds, and I will move that to the, to the non-substantive changes.
Perfect, thank you.
If we all agree to that right now? Let's see, figure out where it is, because I, normally when it's printed out, it's so small, I can't read it.
Replace all, because I think it's in more than just this section.
Okay, I'll look, I'll look for it and
Okay, thank you.
And bring it back. But if everybody agrees, I will move that to a non-substantive correction.
Agreed.
Agreed, everybody, hands up, agreed on making that change?
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. All right, so we will move this to the non-consensus stuff.
Counselor Marian has her hand up. I don't know if you can see that or not.
I'm sorry, I had my picture turned off for a moment while I. Marian, go ahead.
I have a quick clarifying question. Has there been a discussion at all? Or maybe, I don't know if Erin has some guidance on this, but as to what consensus means? Consensus and unanimous are two different things. And so I wonder, has there been a discussion, when it does come down to voting on things, whether it's got to be unanimous or consensus?
Well, very, for, just for this purpose, what I'm trying to do, do today, when I say consensus, I, I meant, are we all unanimous in this particular change? Because if we're not unanimous, I'll take it out so that we all have a chance to discuss it. When we go to vote, when we go to, I know what you mean. When we go to vote to make the changes, I mean, if we don't ever get to unanimous, then it's, it's got to be a straight-up vote. And we'll, we'll note it, and we'll make that known to the council when we, when we present it to them that, you know, this section was unanimous, these were not. If that works. Mr. Robbins?
Oh, one way to define consensus, which I think you're using and as you've defined it, but one way to think about it is there's general agreement. And while somebody may not agree, they're not going to fight it. And it's okay to go forward as stated, or whatever you want to say. So even though you may not be 100% behind it, if you don't oppose it, you're in the consensus to move it forward.
Then, any, any opposition may be a better, may be a better.
Well, yeah, that's what you've been doing.
That's what I've been trying to do. Okay. Is that cleared up, Ms. Marian? And I think once we get to the, once we get to the tough ones, then, you know, I want to give everybody a chance to discuss them and, and hash them out and try to convince everybody else. And then, then it's a straight-up vote, you know, four to two, five to one, are unanimous. Either up or down. Is that fair enough? Okay. All right. 313 is next on our list. Under the rules of procedure. Basically, we eliminated at the end of this for a reproduction free fee and changed it to via the city website so that everybody's got access to it and they can make their own copies and find their own cheap old place to download it and copy it if they want to.
Agree.
Any opposition to that change? None? Okay, we will go forward with that change then. All right. Next on the list is 315, ordinances in general. What did we do to that? Second paragraph. It looks, it looks like that we changed, "An ordinance must be acted whenever the purpose is to regulate persons and property" to, "An ordinance must be enacted whenever the purpose is to regulate persons, property, or both." And I believe we were all in, in agreement on that. Is there any opposition to making that change?
Was that 316?
315. First line of the second paragraph.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm, I'm, oh, go ahead, Erin.
I was just questioning whether we need the and that you added, whether the purpose is to regulate persons, comma, property, comma, or both? Or do you want?
And struck out in my copy.
Yeah, and should be struck out, but I noticed it's not.
It's not, yeah.
It, it's, it's struck out in the, that was, that's a weird conversion error. It struck out, it struck out in the, in the redline version of the charter, but it's not, it was not struck out on the cheat sheet I passed out this week. So it is, yes, it's regulate persons, comma, property, or both. Okay, sorry, my bad. That might have been Durbin conversion, sorry, folks. Good catch. Okay. Next consensus change I have listed is section 316. And I, I, I know this was something that, that, Frank, you weren't, you wanted to go with the title because it was shorter, but I believe Erin read the actual statute and it seemed to, it seemed to describe the descriptive caption. And I think we, we decided to do that just to make it as, as consistent with the current law as, as possible. Is this one you want to, want to, want to waive your opposition, or?
No, I'm good with it.
You're good with it, okay. All right, so we have no opposition to that change to basically change the second sentence to say, "Reading, the reading allowed of the descriptive caption of the ordinance shall suffice as a reading of the." the descriptive caption of the ordinance shall suffice as a reading of the ordinance in its entirety. Okay, I believe that's the only, the only change we needed to make in there. And in three eighteen, the only change was in section, or the, the itemized alphabetized list, section B. And we added, regulate rates charged by public utilities, or the method by which those rates are calculated. Just to prevent any slipping around behind the, yes, Frank?
There's two things. In the redline version of the charter, there's a couple of commas that you added.
You said, oh, there is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed those completely.
Yeah, but so what? That, and, and so I really, it may be, it, it's, it goes, it may be renewed and or re-adopted, comma, if necessary, comma. And I think those are, I think those are correct commas.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I will, I will move that, I will move that to the grammatical change list. And I'm sorry I missed that.
Okay, the, the, it's a, this is really a question. This section talks about things that can't be done on emergency. Right? A, B, C, A, B, C, A, B, and C.
That is correct.
And one of them that can't be done on emergency, it is regu-, regulate rates charged by public utilities. And then we added, or the method by which these rates are calculated. The question is, what do we think the method by which those rates are calculated is? Because you have studies that describe what the rate would be. I, I, I don't know what the difference is between rates and the method by which the rates are, and the buzzword is calculated, as opposed to determined. And so if we, whoops, I lost Christina. Because I bet this is one she'd be interested in. But, Ms. Chairman, do you understand my point?
I, I do. We did have a little discussion as to whether, that that was, whether that, whether the, the language was necessary due to the fact that, you know, when you regulate the rates. Now.
Now, what it looks to me like is that when you're saying the method, what's the method by which those rates are calculated? Is that intended, the method, the word method, is that intended to mean the study? Because those are never adopted. The studies for the rates.
No, I think, I think, I think what they're saying, Frank, is, I think what it means is, the method by which those rates are calculated, for instance, when, you know, the sewer bill is determined by a, a method where it's, it's the selection of a, of the three, what is it, the average of the three winter months. That's, that's the method.
Yeah, but that's rate.
Well, no, the, the rate, I think, is whatever the rate the water charge is. And, and I, I believe that's what, what we were talking about. And, and why they didn't, you know, the, the, the rate is the, is, is the the rate that the dollar, or the cents per, which million gallons that gets a, that's charged for the, the actual water usage. And perhaps.
If you can't know, you can't know what your wastewater rate is. I guess the solution to this would be to look at an ordinance to, to see what defines rates. On the other, on another point, this is a minor issue. If they're the same thing, folks, no problem here. I think they're the same thing.
Well, this is, this, this was.
If you put it in, then it, then it can't matter.
Then, then, this was Gage's idea, and I, I may not have used an example that was, was what he was thinking, so let's give him a chance.
Yeah, if, I mean, the, the intention was that we can't change the rates themselves, or the formulation, if that's a better word than method, or the formulation that's used to determine those rates.
Well, the formulation then sounds like the studies.
No, it would be the, the, the formula for getting to the rate amount.
And I'm reading.
I think it's the same thing, and that, that, that's a function of looking at what the rate adopted by ordinance, for instance, for wastewater sets.
Well, what it sounds like, Rob, is that we don't have consensus, and I would suggest we move it over to the non-consensus list.
I agree.
This is, this is only for emergency meetings and emergency ordinances. So this is only like if we have an ice storm or something like that, and we change the months. And it's only maximum period of 60 days, so it's not necessarily like changing our whole water rate, you know, amount or anything like that.
Correct.
That's what I'm reading it as. It's just emergency meeting ordinances.
Correct, but once, once, once things change, they're hard to get back, and you remember, you've heard the phrase, never waste a good, never waste a good crisis. So, let's, okay, we'll just move it to non-consensus, and we'll come back to it. Gage, is, this is, this is yours, what I might suggest is, let's, if you can think of some, some language that's a little clearer, or whatever, then, then, then let's have that ready for next time. Okay?
Fair enough.
Okay, but while, for now, I'll move it to non-consensus. All right, next change I have is three point two one. And there, we've added the, the words, or it's designate, meaning the council's designate. The council or its designate shall have the power to inquire into the conduct of any city office, department, agency, inquire into the conduct or qualifications of any officer. I thought there was that most of the folks on city council aren't in the business of investigating, and if they really want to do investigate something, they should appoint or retain somebody to do so, and designate them as their investig-, as their designate for investigative purposes. Yes, Frank?
I don't agree with your statement, but I'm okay with what the change is.
Okay.
You said that the council doesn't know how to investigate, and I disagree with that, which connotes that you have to, every time you have an investigation, council's going to hire somebody. I don't agree with that. But, what's opposed is, I'm okay with.
Yeah, I'm, all I'm, all I'm saying is, council can be a bunch of, can be schoolteachers, realtors, retirees, they're not cops, they're not lawyers, they're not. They, they, they aren't really used to digging into people's lives and making their lives miserable like a good investigator should. Okay, but they should be able to designate somebody to do their job for them anyway. That's my only point. All right. But do we agree that it is, that we have consensus on the wording?
Agreed.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Thumbs up, thumbs up, all the way across.
Agreed. I, I would like something to maybe say, like, if someone is being, someone can't investigate themselves, basically.
Well, that's a con-, it's a conflict of interest, and.
Totally. It's happened, but.
I believe conflicts of interest are prohibited under the ethics ordinance, aren't they? Erin?
Conflicts of interest under the ethics ordinance are different than the situation that you're describing. The conflict of interest provisions have to do with financial conflicts, personal benefit conflicts. I, I disagree with Ms. Lucero's interpretation of what she believes may have happened in the past. So, they're related, but they are not the same. And then when you look at the conflict of interest provisions specifically in state statute, that is directly related to financial interest. And so that's, again, yet again, a different aspect of the law. So, although I fundamentally do agree that someone should not investigate their self, if there is, if they are the... So, what would, what would have to happen is the council would have to choose to have someone else investigate that particular action. If the person who, if it, if, for example, it's finances that's involved, that are involved, you know, it, the ultimate responsibility for the city finances falls upon the city manager, in addition to the finance department, things like that. If the council chose to have someone on the outside in, investigate an issue, for example, have an auditor look at it, or someone with that particular expertise to have the authority to do it. So, I mean, if we're talking about investigative body, if we're still on three point twenty-one, the designate seems appropriate. It would allow the council to appoint someone or designate someone to do that review, or to do that, to take that look.
And if the council is crazy enough to appoint somebody, a designate, to investigate themselves, then I'm sure there'll be candidates to beat those councilmen over the head with them the next election.
That's exactly what the election process is for, part of it. Yep. If you're not happy with the way it functions, then you run for office. Yes.
Okay. I know what, I know, I know what you mean, Christina, but we can't, you can't.
I agree.
You can't walk, you can't, training wheels are only good, good for so long, and so, so much. Okay?
I agree with what it's.
All right, so this, all right, but this, the language change is, I believe we have no, no opposition to this language change, correct? Correct, okay. Okay. All right. Frank, I think you're up. We're on to five point oh one. This is, which I think is one you mentioned before we started. Let's see.
Well, no, that, no, no, what, what I had with, I've got, the issue I had with earlier is taken care of.
Oh, okay.
But I got a bunch of questions about city election stuff, and I'm not sure that we can do this under this section, because I don't know how five oh one is written. But I've got a bunch of questions for Erin. I don't know if she's ready to answer or not about city elections. But I think it's going to get dealt with under, non, under substantive, no consensus.
I agree too. Let's, let's hold off on that, and I'm not sure we'll get that far tonight, so.
Right.
We, we might actually give Erin another week to take a look for that, at that stuff. The things I was going for in this, in this batch is, and if, and one thing that I did, just so you know, is if there were, there were non-consensative items in the same paragraph as consensus items, I did not put the consensus items in that, I didn't include that paragraph. These essentially were isolated paragraphs of, of what I called consensus items. So, five point oh one, we got to come back to for non-agreement, and it also has a bunch of non-substantive fixes in it, because it was a very bizarre translation, software translation deal. But, we did have some changes in the, in the second paragraph, where the starts off, which is enumerated, with candidates shall follow these rules. There was a non-substantive change in C, which was just a, a software translation error. I also believe the "and" at the end of that, oh, the "and" is on that one, that's right, sorry. And for some reason, the "and" got struck out, when it should have been an underlined "and" at the, at, on D. So, that is an addition. Then E. And then, I can't read my screen well enough to know that that's a, a semicolon at the end, or a mistyped colon, but it should be a semicolon. And and then we added an F that says, a, a sitting council member filing for reelection for the same position shall file for election 15 days on or before the filing deadline. And I, I had noted, and I had no recollection of whether we had consensus or not, but my notes said we did. So I went ahead and put it on here on the consensus one. And I'll ask now, I'm, on, on A through E, those grammatical changes, that some got cleared up and some didn't, I will fix. But the addition of F, is that, is that something we all agree on? I do. I do, Christina does, Gage does, oh, you Frank? Yep, okay.
Carter, Carter does.
Okay. Good. It's nice to know my notes, my notes were right, and my recollection was missing. Yes, Christina?
Um, so this talks about incumbents seeking reelection for the, the same city council position that they hold. What about, oh, if a, oh, never mind, it already says it, if they want to apply for mayor.
Right.
You already have that in there, thank you.
They got to resign from their spot, and then, and then run.
For 15 days as well?
Well, no, they can, because they're, they're essentially a new candidate for mayor, they can, they can go right up to the deadline.
Yeah, okay. Even with the removal of theirs within 15 days or?
Oh, no, no, that's not right. It says, any elected council member filing for the office of mayor shall file 15 days beforehand.
Okay, that's what.
They're already elected, unless they resign their seat before they, before they decide to run, which would be silly, I don't know why they would, but you never know. They, then, then they, then they got to do it 15 days in advance as well, so. Okay? All right. I'm okay with that. That way, we, we know, everybody knows what, that there's not going to be empty seats here and there. Yes, Erin, was that a hand?
I want, yes, sir, I just want to make sure y'all looked at, I think that what Christina was saying, she was right. Because if you read D, E, and F altogether, if you're an elected council member filing for office of mayor, you have to file 15 days before the filing deadline. And then, if you're in that same boat, filing for mayor, you have to resign from the office presently held on or before the canvassing date. So basically, you can, you hold your office up until the election is canvassed, so you don't have to resign before you run.
That's correct.
And then, but then, if you're running for your same position, you're, you're in the same boat as if you're running for mayor. You have to file 15 days before the filing deadline.
Right.
It's all consistent.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the, the, and this is, and I don't know if Christina's thinking about this one. But if somebody wants to run for mayor, and it's in an, and it's also their seat is up, and they run unopposed. and they run unopposed, in other words, nobody files for their council member's seat and they get elected mayor, what happens to their seat?
Yeah, I was trying to...
That's what you, that's what you were, yeah.
Make it a little bit more like common playing field, I guess, kind of. So we don't have an empty seat.
Well, and that's one reason why hearing from all of the sitting council members, whether they're running for their own seat or for mayor, we, knowing 15 days before, I think will help prevent an empty seat because, you know, then if, everybody will know 15 days before that that's going to be an empty seat. And so some, somebody ought to step up. If not, then we don't have enough people that want to be on the council. We need to figure out a way to make those meetings shorter.
Need folks on the bench.
Right. Okay. So, but we, we have consensus on that one, but I got to make some changes to the grammar.
Erin, have we fixed this so there won't be a vacancy if... The way, the way that, the way we have proposed the changes, are we going to have, is it possible, is it possible to have a vacant council seat after the election?
It is. I can tell you how. And that is if a council member announces that he's going to run for mayor 15 days before the election deadline and nobody steps up and says, "Well, heck, nobody else, you know, nobody's running in that seat. There's no incumbent, I'm going to run." And then you have, you have nobody running for that council seat. Because...
And if that happens, I mean, you can't make somebody run for it.
Right.
I mean, you, you just, the council will have to appoint and fill the vacancy and that's that.
Yeah. Under that, under that procedure.
Okay, thanks, thanks Paul.
Okay. City elections, all right. We got a big jump down to 6, 6.10. Results of recall elections. And I think our consensus, we had, we had a proposed, we had a proposed change that said, "Council member who was removed by recall may not be allowed to seek city office again." I think we had a consensus to remove that and leave it to the, leave it to the citizens to vote them in or vote them or not. Is that correct? Yep, yep. Okay. No, no ban. Automatic ban, anyway. So that, that's actually a vote on a non-change, but that's, but it was, since it was on our, since it was on our cheat sheet for so long, I figured we ought to go ahead and talk about it. All right, 611. Limitations on recall. I believe we deleted the word "initial" in front of "election." No recall petition may be filed against any officer or city that's six months after his or her election or appointment. The initial election never seemed to make any sense in there at all.
Right.
I think we all just agreed that that's a goner. Okay, gone? Okay. 611 consensus. Public records.
Judge Durbin, I agree with this one. I'm just going to step off for two seconds while y'all talk about 8, 9.
Okay. On 8, 9, I think we just put the budget capital improvement and appropriations, revenue ordinances shall be public records and shall be made to the public at suitable places in the city. And then we added including the city's website. And I think that, you know, I... I guess my question, and this is probably for you, Erin, is when we say "the budget" and the, and the charter, you know, is there an official one stored someplace? You know, because when we started this process, actually just getting a copy of the charter and a Word version of the charter was kind of tricky because there was about four or five PDFs of a charter out there that had a bunch of mistakes in them. And then, and then, you know, I think this PDF is the actual copy of the charter. And then there was no Word version of it, so we had to, we had to do some conversion. I guess, I assume somewhere there is an official repository of the actual documents. Is that, is that true?
Yes, the city secretary, as your official repository for all the documents, has the official versions, the signed copies of, or the approved copies of the budget as they're adopted by the council every year, the approved version of the charter. There is an official version.
Okay.
It's not pretty all the time, but she has the official version.
Yep. And hopefully, if we put them all on the city website, then, and she's in charge of that too, or getting them up on there anyway, then hopefully they'll all be the same. That's the, that's the critical, that's the critical one portion that concerns me.
Yeah, I'm okay with the city secretary.
This is only dealing with financial-related stuff.
What's that?
This section doesn't deal with all public records.
I know. I know. But I mean, in a recent, in a recent city council meeting, it seemed that Councilman Prince had a, had a copy of a budget that was not the same as some of the other copies of the budget in it. And it was like, okay, who's on first?
Yeah, definitely.
Which one's right?
Yeah, because the one at the .gov one, the budgeting website that we ended up using was different from the one that we actually had on our city's website.
Yeah, Christina, you're absolutely, I'm going to take a minute. When Christina, when you said that they didn't match the ClearGov stuff and they didn't match for a lot.
A lot.
For a long time.
And things that we had to talk about.
And if, if folks are still using the ClearGov as the budget, somebody needs to fix that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
I'm okay, I'm okay with a Word doc version of this not being readily available. I'm glad with just having like one copy that Sandra locks up because I don't want anything to be changeable.
Yeah. Once it, once it's put in stone, it'll be a lockdown PDF.
Absolutely.
That you can't, you can't...
Is the charter on file anywhere with the state? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
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 It has to be filed with the state, just like bylaws for appropriation and other things.
Yeah, with the secretary of state or something like that.
Okay.
So just for the group's knowledge, if you go to the city website, the adopted versions of the budget, the audits, the monthly financials, the annual report, property tax rate, finance policies, our governing documents, including the charter, ethics policy, all of that, it's all on the website. The official versions are there. I think your change is good because that makes it a requirement, but it's already out there.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that way at least everybody has a place to go to look at the same thing. And if, if they got, if they got something different, then the one on the website counts. Okay. Let's move on to Section 11. Speaking of the city's website, we added that requirement that the notice for, on these tax obligations, the petition and election for them, the notice shall be published as required by state law and if not by state law, it will comply with this section, must be published once a week for two consecutive weeks on the city's website and a newspaper as defined by Subchapter C, Chapter 2051 Government Code. So we didn't take anything away, we just added that it needs to be on the website too because particularly here, that's where people are going more and more to, to look for stuff about the city.
It's also required by law.
Oh, that it's on the website? Oh, okay. All right. I knew it had to be in the newspapers, I didn't know it had to be on the website. Okay.
Yeah, our legislators have finally caught up with the 21st century.
Yeah. Have they forced every city to actually have a website?
No.
There you go.
Not quite that far, but if you have a website, you are required to...
Okay. We do have, we don't have any opposition to this, I assume, since it is now the law. Okay. All right. Now I've got the next change as purchasing in contracts. And that one, it's 816. We shortened it a bit because mostly because it had some language that didn't really need to be in there. But we also added the city ordinances and state law governed purchasing in contracts. All sales of city property purchases made, contracts executed by the city shall be made in accordance with the applicable city ordinances and state law governing competitive bids, period. That's the end of the set paragraph. Is that, that's what we all agreed on, yes? Thumbs up? Okay. I have to step away for a moment, but I'm not in opposition of any of the changes coming up, so I'll be right back. Okay. All right. Next section is Section 904, Collection of Taxes. And, yep, Gage is not in favor, or is not against this one because he's the guy that proposed it. Basically, what it allows is the city council may provide by ordinance that all delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest due to the city can be paid in installments so that the penalties and interest can also be included in the installments. With no opposition on this one, I assume it gives the city council more flexibility to fix stuff and try to collect money? All right. 10.01, Public Services and Utilities. Now, we had some chatter last time about what to call this, but I think we decided to just call it Data Communications Infrastructure. And to stick that in and, and consider that a public service and utility that the city can do the same thing with, that it can do to the telephone, sewer system, electricity, and cable TV, and the other stuff that it can own and make, that can maintain and operate within the city. Do we have any opposition to the change in 10.1 by adding data communications infrastructure to the itemized Section A? All, all good? Yep, okay. And how do we get so, how do we get so agreeable at the end of this? Must it just wore each other down?
We don't know what any of this stuff means.
All right. Franchise of public utilities. We, we did the same thing there. We added data communications infrastructure. And we also added cable television as it seemed to be a missing public utility that was just not listed previously. Any opposition? Oh, okay. 10.05. Whoops, where do we go? That's the franchise stuff, and we eliminated cable TV from the franchises for public services. Yes, Frank?
That's not the way the list reads. You got to, it's underlined again.
Let's see. Oh, we added, yeah. Yeah. I haven't added, but I believe it's supposed to be struck out, isn't it?
Yes, sir. That's what I've got.
Yes, okay. That's right. Struck out, okay. That's correct. I tell you, getting, getting this, getting the red line versions from one place to another is difficult because anytime you move them, it automatically makes all those corrections on its own. And it, it underlines things and, and so I had to go back in and re-strike out and re-underline, and I screwed this one up, sorry.
No, Ms. Chairman, I don't know if anybody else on this group has done that, but I have. And this is tough stuff, so I know what you went through, thank you.
Yeah, it's, well, and, and...
You get formatting issues, you get all kinds of stuff.
Yep, yep. And, alrighty. So that cleans up the cable, we're removing cable television services from franchise for public services. And no opposition? No opposition? Okay. 10, 7. We just corrected the word from connection to correction, which I believe was just a, that's just a, either a typo or a conversion error. Don't know which, but the correct, it should be correction. Any opposition? No. Okay, 11, 03. Public records. Okay. "All public records of the city shall be open to inspection and copying by the public, subject to rules, regulations, and exceptions provided by state law and local ordinances," is how we have changed it to read rather than, rather than in the council, which would seem to indicate that you need to go to council every time you want to look at the public records. I believe we're all in favor of that one, yes? Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Also, I'm sorry, 11:03 ran over to the second page, and we struck out, we just said accurate permanent copy of the reproduction of public records, period, and we eliminated the microfilm and photographic process because we are in the 21st century. Accurate, accurate copying and reproduction covers it, correct? Just wanted to make sure we got agreement on that, yep, okay. 11:07, Notice of Claims Against the City. We added that whoever makes a claim on somebody's behalf must have the appropriate legal capacity, so you, some yahoo can't come down and make a claim for somebody else. Would either need to be, that'd be parent, lawyer, guardians, things of that nature, not neighbors, friends, brother-in-laws. Okay, we all in agreement on that? Oh, also, there was a, looked like a conversion error in that the second enumerated one had an E in front of it rather than a B, so we changed that to B. Okay. We are all in agreement on that, yes, Christina?
I am in agreement of that one. I didn't see in your information on to change your consensus stuff, and maybe it's because we're not in consensus, but on 810, Section 810, Bonds and Other Financial Obligations.
Yeah, hang on just a second.
Okay.
Let me conclude this, because this is the last one on my list.
Please, thank you.
Okay, we will conclude, I'll conclude that, and then, okay, and rather than vote on it, because there's more changes in those that I, that I can do on the fly, and I want to make sure we got a good, clear, clean copy, I will re-prepare that, we'll vote on that next time, but I think we're very close and don't have to beat it to death anymore. Okay, Christina, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Section 810, Bonds and Other Financial Obligations. I had requested the change of, it's probably about six sentences down, let's see, that, it's a long sentence, notwithstanding of any provision of this charter to the contrary, ordinances, blah, 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 blah. Taxes or the pledges of revenues to secure payment of indebtedness shall require one reading only, and I asked for more than one reading.
I have that in the, I have that redlined in the document, but I don't, I didn't, I don't think we had consensus on that.
Okay.
Last time, so I did not include it in there.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up.
It's 810 at this, or 10 till 8 at this point. Let me see what else I have on the agenda here. We, I left the, I left the, I added enough to the agenda to see, so that we can go forward and continue to start to discuss these other changes in a little more detail and start making our final pitches on them if we want to, or we can, we can do that at the next meeting, when, where I will do the same thing, but I, in the next meeting, my intention is to break out each paragraph onto a separate piece of paper to discuss one at a time, so that we, we are, everybody can get their pitches in, and in any, any of those, we will vote on as a whole. So that, that's my intention, and it may make things go quicker, and it may not make any sense to start debate or discussion, whichever we want to call it, on the issues we do not have consensus on at this time. So I am, I am open to suggest, let's discuss that first. Y'all want to go forward, or do y'all want to, want to save that for a, for next week, or two weeks?
I'm okay with building our discussions and coming back in two weeks.
Okay, alright, anybody else?
Yeah, I would suggest that, that given the urgency that we're getting and the fact we're running out of calendar, we may want to look at adding a meeting next week to keep things rolling.
Second thought? Yeah, I agree, and I did have on here, I think I did, a discussion of a potential special section, which, which is what I am, what I'm proposing. And I think the question is, is, I think we, on that, on that sort of a thing, we should plan a long, a long one, that we all have time where we can sit down. Yes, Frank, Paul Roberts?
I was just going to say something to your very point, is I think, once all of us get talking, it could get, this could get extended. So it might be advantageous to schedule it earlier, a start time earlier in the day, if we can find an earlier start time that's conducive to everybody's schedule.
Okay.
But I don't know how feasible that's going to be. I know Christina, she's got young children she has to take care of, I have the luxury of other options a little bit, but the earliest I could start, I would just throw this out there, would probably be like 4:35, which is not that much earlier, but it's a little something.
Well, if we, if we all decide to go ahead and eat our dinners early and go late, then that, that is something. But I think that's what we're going to need to do as well.
But we could always, we could always meet for an hour and a half or two hours and take a 30-minute break for dinner and come back together.
Sure, we can do that, we can recess, Frank?
I'm going to be in Puerto Rancis and check in at 3:00, and I hope we'll make that, and so I hope I'll actually be able to be seated by 4:30, so that's just an issue. I don't think that's a problem, but that's a fact.
Okay.
Are Mondays still the ideal day for everybody for something like this? It would be for me, but everybody else?
Yeah, it works for me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, this is, this is something that I will, I'll bend my schedule to the, to the will of the group, as best I can, unless just some judge drags me to Zavala County or something, which is always a possibility.
Can it be preferable, I wonder, to anybody, a weekend day? Just throwing that out there, would a Saturday or a Sunday be preferable to anyone?
Sunday's preferable to me.
What day?
Sunday. That's preferable, but.
I would prefer it a weekend day myself, just because of my workload, you know, weekend day, we could start earlier in the day, shit, we could shoot, we could start in the morning, knock it out.
Wait, we got, if we do Sunday, it ought to be afternoon sometime, I'll be.
That folks gotta go to church.
Sunday morning.
Yeah.
Coming weekend is Father's Day weekend.
Oh, that's right. What about Sunday the 20th?
That's Father's Day. Sunday the 20th is Father's Day.
Yeah, that's good for me.
That's Father's Day.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sunday the 27th.
27th? Why don't, why don't we do, why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we?
Do Monday the 21st, and then see where we are.
Do Monday the 21st, and then, and then discuss a weekend to grind it out.
And Monday the 21st, I mean, I can go 5 o'clock if y'all need to. I like the 30-minute break in between two, just so I can feed my kiddo.
Yeah, I'll give you a break. The, and we can, we can pretty much gear up to plan to go along, but I think it makes sense to start, to start that process of the discussions and debates on giving everybody some time to get your, get your arguments and discussions and your advocacy skills all sharpened up, so that we can figure out which ones you really care about, because, you know, at some point, at some point, as Frank said, you might not agree, but you don't oppose, so that's always, that is always a deal too. Let's, okay, in that case, let's schedule a special section for next Monday.
5:00 PM?
Monday at 5:00 PM?
Shalane, I know that you still work too, it's 5 o'clock, or is that okay for you?
I appreciate you asking Christina, but that'll be fine for next week.
Yeah, well, okay, thank you, Shalane. Yes, that's, so, some of us are not, are not the masters of our own schedule, so that, that is always, that's always an issue. And I will, I will get an agenda together for that, that looks very similar to this week's agenda, to give us as much freedom as possible to talk about each item. And that, that, and like I said, we will go, we will just go through those one by one, and I will try to get them all on a separate page for you, and do my best to get the strikeouts and underlines correct, because I, I have to do that manually, because it doesn't transfer over. And we will, we will go, we'll go from there. Anything else to discuss tonight?
Aaron?
Yes, and if we, if you have any questions for Aaron and stuff, let's try to ask her now, so she's got some time to get, get answers together. And, yes, somebody, I heard, Aaron, was that you, Christina? No?
That was me.
Oh, that was you?
Yes, sir. So just two things, one, all, thank you for making the statement about sending me questions, I'm happy to do any research that you feel is necessary. I don't have a dog in this hunt, guys, I'm going to give you legal advice based on what the law says, so ask me the questions you have, I'll give you the legal basis for if there's something, if there's not, I'll let you know that too. I have questions from Frank already, I'll provide you that election-related stuff, and we can send it out to the whole group, so everyone has it. And I've also requested that the staff post the packet that should have been posted for today, have it put up on the web so that everyone has it. So, and then, when you, Chairman, when you send me your agenda and packet, I'll make sure that, that the packet actually gets posted, because I feel it's very important to.
Yeah, I, I just assumed there was a little bit of a delay, and I didn't look at it again until this morning, this afternoon, and, when there, okay, that'll work, I will, there's anything else? Do I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Tannehill, you popped on there, do you have a question? You're muted.
Yeah, I'm still muted, you muted me, but, so I thought I put my picture on.
I didn't mute, I don't have that ability.
Oh. Okay, everything sounds good, the dates sound good, I actually have a, or normally have a North Shore Republican meeting on the 14th, but it's been moved to the 15th Tuesday, so I'm okay for the 14th.
Well, that's good, because today is the 14th.
Yeah, I was good for that, so.
Okay. Alright.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we'll see you next week, thank you.
Good night, everybody, see you next week.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.